Good evening. Welcome to the May 27, 2025 Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. City Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Sure. Councilmember Stevenson or Deputy Mayor Stevenson is excused absent. Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Spambauer?
Here.
Flom?
Here.
Builo?
Here.
And Mugiwawa?
Here.
We have six present.
Before we move on to the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to take a brief moment. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the passing of a former council member. Councilmember Bill Miller passed away yesterday. Not only was Bill a former council member, but he was a huge supporter of everything Oshkosh, and to say that he was a friend of this city would be an absolute understatement. So if you wouldn't mind standing for a brief moment of silence with us to honor Bill Miller's passing. Thank you. Councilmember Nichols is going to lead us into invocation, and then we'll do the pledge following that.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. Mayor decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Could I all rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, to start tonight off, we have a few presentations and a couple of public hearings after that. Tonight's presentations, Shirley Brodmunder-Maddix, a former councilwoman, is going to be presenting the 2025 Acanthus Awards to the four recipients we have. Shirley, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. Tradition is kind of important in a city. In 1981, the Landmarks Commission presented the first Acanthus Award for Historic Preservation to citizens that were committed to saving parts of our history that really define us. And so tonight, we can continue that tradition. The first person is Luanne Leib. Luanne, could you come up, please? Come on up. Okay, and then the mayor, after I read the narrative, the mayor will then present the certificate to you. Can't see. The Bowman Block is recognized with the Acanthus Award for Luanne Leib's dedication to preserving and maintaining this 1894 Queen Anne-style two-story building with two storefronts. It was built for Charles and Amanda Bowman, who operated a butcher shop and a grocery store and resided in one of the second-floor apartments. In 1910, the grocery store became the Star Theater, showing silent films for five cents. It was, quote, "one of the enterprises intended to play a part in the booming of Oregon Street", end quote. In 1926, when a fire broke out in the projection room gutting the entire of the theater, 200 patrons filed out in orderly fashion. The theater was renovated and fireproofed and continued to show movies until 1955. In 1961, Guy Burr operated a dry cleaning business on one side and an insurance business on the other side. Terry Leib restored the facades in time for its 100th birthday in 1994. Luanne Leib has owned this building since 2008 and has continued to maintain this historic building by replacing four furnaces and a boiler, a roof, and updating the wiring and lighting. She operates the Star Gallery Arts and Antique Shop that reflects her deep appreciation for art and Oshkosh history. She hired a consultant to research and nominate this building, one of a very few examples of Queen Anne commercial-style architecture on Oshkosh's south side. It was listed for the state and national register in 2024. We commend Luanne for her dedication in preserving this architectural gem for the south side and the city of Oshkosh. Thank you, Luanne.
So on behalf of the City of Oshkosh and the Landmarks Commission, we are pleased to recognize the contribution of Luanne Leib in regards to the preservation and restoration of the Bowman Block at Star Theater for maintaining the 1894 Queen Anne Building and ensuring that it is recognized as a historic cultural place on Oshkosh's south side through its individual listing on the National Register of Historic Places. So congratulations, and thank you.
Cheryl Heinbigner's 1928 Tudor Revival Home at 1502 North Main Street is receiving an Acanthus Award for exterior rehabilitation, preserving its historic character while addressing structural and weather-related issues. Cheryl's projects focused on repairing and preserving the cedar siding by replacing damaged sections and painting the entire house. Rather than replace the many beautiful hardwood windows, she had them repaired and rebuilt. One of the outstanding architectural features of the front facade beside the arched opening of the door is this wooden gate, which had been destroyed. Cheryl replaced the wooden gate in hardware. To address water issues, she fixed the landscaping, replaced the concrete patio, and installed new gutters. This Tudor Revival Home is a fitting entry to the North Main Street Bungalow District, listed on the state and national register in 2013. We commend Cheryl for her efforts to preserve and maintain this home, built by skilled Oshkosh craftsmen incorporating beautiful hardwood throughout. Thank you for your efforts, and congratulations.
On behalf of the City of Oshkosh and the Landmarks Commission, we are pleased to recognize the contributions of Cheryl Heinbigner in regards to the preservation and restoration of the Harry J. and Rose Rowley House in 1928 for restoring the Tudor Revival House at 1502 North Main Street in the North Main Street Bungalow Historic District on the National Register. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Jeffrey and Sandy Davis's 1910 Concrete and Stucco American Craftsman Home at 1302 Washington Avenue is receiving an Acanthus Award for exterior rehabilitation and preservation that they've done between 2023 and 2024. They began with repairs to the exposed framing on the attic dormer on the western facade. This was followed by power washing, the stone, and painting all the exterior wood. In 2024, they were approved for an Oshkosh Historic Preservation Program to repair the flat roof and front porch. This revealed significant wood rot, so this resulted in the reframing and re-roofing the porch and installing a new gutter system. Can we have the next slide, please? I want to show the wood rot. Once the roof was repaired, they restored the porch, installed a tongue-and-groove ceiling and new wood screens. They repaired the molding, and when they removed the soffits, the original scalloped rafter tails that you can see in the photo had been concealed for decades, and now they were exposed. Jeffrey and Sandy Davis's pride of place is exemplified through restoring and preserving the architectural elements of this unique home built by Oshkosh craftsmen. It is located in the Washington Avenue Historic District, listed on the state and national register, and it's a proud home in this neighborhood. Thank you, and keep going.
The City of Oshkosh and the Landmarks Commission are pleased to recognize the contribution of Jeffrey and Sandy Davis in regards to the preservation and restoration of the George Meath House from 1910 for preserving and structurally restoring the 1910 American Craftsman Concrete and Stucco Home at 1302 Washington Avenue. Congratulations, and thank you.
The Winnebago County Courthouse is receiving the Acanthus Award for a series of restoration and preservation projects. Mike Elder, Director of Facilities for Winnebago County, is here to accept the award on behalf of the county and because he was integrally involved with these projects over the years. This five-story structure was built in 1938 during the Great Depression without federal funds. We did it ourselves. It was designed by architect Frank Venning of Granger and Bolonbecker and Julius Sandstedt. The flat walls of Indiana limestone are interrupted by the central pavilion in contrast with the multi-story windows and multi-pane glass. The hand-carved stone geometric surrounds framing the bronze doors at the entranceways are highly ornate. Alfonso Anielli fashioned these ball-relief designs with references to Mayan art depicting stylized American Indians' families, agriculture, industry, and heads of county officials. In 2020, numerous two-story historic windows were replaced to closely resemble the original ones. The entire limestone exterior was cleaned. The roof was repaired. And while all the restoration work was being done, they found the original paint samples from Sherwin-Williams, which they can use today, and they are assured that they are being historic. Sadly, most of the historic bronze lighting had been replaced earlier, but as some of the original fixtures are located, they were polished and restored to their original setting. The lobby between the two courtrooms on the second floor had been closed off, but it has now been opened up and once again serves as a magnificent original lobby with similar historic lighting fixture. Throughout the building, solid bronze railings, elevator doors, mailboxes, room signs, and clocks have been polished and once again heightened the interior's splendor. There was a need to build a welcome center and security annex. Architectural drawings from 1953 inspired the addition and balanced with the Art Modern style. The original exterior was incorporated and highlights the carvings on either side of the interior entrance. The courthouse is on the state and national register of historic places. We can be very grateful that the county and its facilities department respect the architecture as they worked with Schipol and restored and preserved the interior and exterior of this historic courthouse for the 172,000 residents who live here. I hope that people, residents, will take advantage and just stop in and look at the magnificent art from the Great Depression, and it was part of the WPA program also. Thank you, Mike, for being so enthusiastic about the work that you've done, and I'm sure you'll be continuing because we have a lot of old buildings. Thank you.
The City of Oshkosh and the Landmarks Commission are pleased to recognize the contribution of Winnebago County in regards to the preservation and restoration of the Winnebago County Courthouse for restoring the 1938 modern art-deco building, highlighting its original splendor, and adding the security annex based upon 1953 drawings. Congratulations, and thank you. And thank you, Shirley, as well as the other members of the Landmarks Commission for all the work you do in helping to recognize the preservation efforts throughout this community. Thank you. Next up, we have several public hearings, so you're going to hear me reading a lot. Try not to doze off while I'm doing so. I'll be reading all three times, and then we'll be taking up the action for each as we move along here. First up, public hearing for Resolution 25248. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-02: Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. This is for work on Nebraska Street, West 9th Avenue, West 10th Avenue, West 11th Avenue, West 12th Avenue, West South Park Avenue, West 14th Avenue, West 15th Avenue, and West 16th Avenue. I don't have anyone registered to speak on this one. Second reading, Resolution 25-248, is a public hearing to approve the special, excuse me, final resolution for special assessments for Contract 2502: Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay. Third and final reading, public hearing for Resolution 25248. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-02: Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. I see no one here to speak. I'll consider the public hearing closed, and we'll take a motion and a second on the resolution.
So move second.
Any discussion on 25-248? I see none. If you'll take the role on 25248?
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugiwawa?
Aye.
Carried six?
Resolution 25-249, a public hearing to approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-04: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. It's for work on Bay Shore Drive, Broad Street, and Bay Street. I don't see anyone registered or coming forward. This will be the second reading. James, if you wouldn't mind, excuse me, Mr. Robbie, if you wouldn't mind coming up. I do have a brief question for clarification, but I'll continue reading. Second reading, public hearing for Resolution 25249. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-04: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. Third and final reading, public hearing for Resolution 25-249. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-04: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. I have no one here to speak on this. We'll consider the public hearing closed, and I'll take a motion and a second on 25-249.
So move second.
Recently, last council meeting, we had, I believe, a gentleman or a couple gentlemen here from Bay Street had some questions regarding the construction project. I know you've communicated with council on a little bit of a follow-up on that. There was a question amongst council members as to the timing. We're approving special assessments. That's the way it looks tonight. Can you just at least give us the why this is here, the procedural part of why we're doing this, even though we may come back to you and possibly tell you to alter something in the near future?
Yeah, the public hearing really sets the maximum amount that the special assessments can be without going back to another public hearing. So if the council decides later on to change their mind on the sidewalk, that just means when we certify the special assessments later on, it'll be at a lower number.
Appreciate you informing. Just want to make sure everybody has the same information and receives it right from the source, so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
If there's no other questions on Councilmember Larson?
Mine was the same one along the same lines, James. You sort of answered it in email, but it's my first time kind of doing this. Are you saying that, I mean, I fully, I don't think there should be sidewalks on Bay Street. I'll get that out right away, and I'm happy to say that later if that's a better time. So you would rather us not say that now, you'd rather us say that later?
You can say it whenever you want, but as far as the actions go, approving the public hearing resolution the way it is right now will not change anything with you being able to make that decision at a future date to take them off.
Good enough for me. Thank you.
Good question. City Clerk, if you take the role on 24249. Excuse me, 25249.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugiwawa?
Aye.
Carried six?
Public hearing for Resolution 25-250. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-05: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. This is for work being performed on Wagu Avenue, Sweet Street, and Shore Lane Street. I don't have anyone registered on this one. Second reading of Resolution 25-250. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-05: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. Third and final reading, Resolution 25-250. It's a public hearing to approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-05: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. I have no one here to speak on this. We'll consider the public hearing closed, and I'll take a motion on 25-250.
So move second.
Any discussion? If you'll take the role on 25250?
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugiwawa?
Aye.
Carried six?
We have a few more, so just bear with me here. Resolution 25-251. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-07: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. I have no one registered on this one. Second reading, Resolution 25-251. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-07: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. This is for work being performed on West 15th Avenue, Ohio Street, Michigan Street, Iowa Street, and Minnesota Street. Third and final reading, approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-07: Sidewalk New Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. We have no one here for the public hearings. We'll consider it closed, and we'll take a motion and a second on 25-251.
So move second.
Any discussion on this resolution? I see none. If you'll take the role on 25-251?
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spambauer?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Mugiwawa?
Aye.
Carried six?
Resolution 25-252. A public hearing to approve the final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-08: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay for work being performed on Central Street, Tennessee Avenue, West Custer Avenue, West Nevada Avenue, and West Bent Avenue. I do have one person registered to speak on this. Now would be a great time if you'd like to come up over here. Remington Taft, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. This is my first time being here, so I apologize if I'm a little nervous. I had a couple of concerns regarding this project. I believe one part is towards the beginning phase of this project that is probably already completed, but my second part of this was I spoke with the department head, I believe her name was Maria, back in February, so I was a little surprised to see this assessment bill essentially come to me. She told me back in February to wait on pursuing changing anything in my home as far as lead pipes go and all of this goes because you guys were getting grant money to cover it, so I was not going to have to pay a dime. And I was like, you're sure? Like, my house, my street side, like, everything's going to be covered? And she's like, yep, just wait it out. So I was a little concerned to see that come. Don't know if that grant money just fell through, or maybe it was just never there, and I was lied to about it, but again, I'm a first-time homeowner, so maybe I'm just a little naive as well. But I did check into it, and I was a little concerned about that. Not sure if there's an answer for that today or potential follow-up to be had in the future, but just something I wanted to bring up in case anybody else did. My second piece, like I said, I think it's going to be for the project that, part of it that already happened. So for our street, like, the first phase, they took down a bunch of trees on my street. They took down everything except for one tree that's on my neighboring neighbor's property, and I've contacted the city about this, and I didn't get an answer. But, so all those trees were taken down about two months ago, and the final tree that was left, again, kitty corners of my driveway, just fell on my house two weeks ago, and it was completely rotted, and I'm wondering what the thought process was to why that tree was not taken down with all the other ones, because I now have $17,000 worth of damage to my home that is not being covered by insurance. Again, not sure if there's an answer today or there can be follow-up in the future, but I'm kind of hitting dead ends everywhere I go in regards to trying to figure out what I can do.
Thank you. We have the Director of Public Works here as well as his Assistant Director, Mr. Girac Simbak, and Mr. Robbie. While we advance through this, if either yourself or Mr. Girac could chat with Ms. Taft regarding these things, that would be probably appreciated.
I'll ask Justin to step outside and speak with you if you don't mind. Justin's a little more up to date on exactly where things are at with the contract, because I'm not sure if the trees were related to the contract or if it was something that forestry was doing, so if, Justin will meet you outside and have some more conversation with you.
That'd be great. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for breaking up the mayor a little bit.
That was the first reading. We have a second reading. Resolution 25-252. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 2508: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. Third and final reading, Resolution 25-252. Approve final resolution for special assessments for Contract 25-08: Sidewalk New and Rehabilitation, Driveway Aprons, Sanitary Sewer Main and Laterals New and Relay, Water Main and Laterals New and Relay, and Storm Sewer Maines and Laterals New and Relay. We'll consider the public hearing closed, and I will take a motion and a second for 25-252.
So move second.
Mr. Nichols?
Thanks. Just because the person said what she said about lead pipes, I just don't want anybody to be confused by. Is there anyone that could speak to, not necessarily what happened there, I know no one was there, but what that program is and what people should expect during construction projects?
Good question.
Yes, the grant funding that we, or Safe Drinking Water Loan Program is the better way to say it, funding that we have for assisting property owners with replacing their private side-led services is 50% covered by the program, 50% covered by the property owner. Depending on certain income qualifications, we are working with community development to get some CDBG assistance for property owners that do meet certain income thresholds, so I'm not sure where that one would fall, but generally speaking, it is a 50% coverage. There is a project that will be coming later this year that covers just a certain, it's actually two census tracts in the city that qualified for 100% funding through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, but that is not a project that has come out yet. This one would fall under our typical 50% program, so I'm not sure what happened with the communication there, but we'll certainly try to get that. what happened with the communication there, but we'll, we'll certainly try to get that sorted out. But generally, it is 50% coverage through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program.
That's super helpful. And who should people contact if they have questions about that program?
They, they can certainly start by contacting the Public Works Main Office, and we'll get them directed. Our management analyst, the, management analyst, Maria Fletcher, is doing most of the program, but also Assistant Director and Utilities General Manager Steve Godey is very involved in it. So they can start with our main number at 236-5065, and we'll certainly get people connected to the right staff.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
DJ, great questions. James, good answer. Also, just so we're totally clear with people, I think the miscommunication here is that we're talking about private side grants for lead replacement that there's grant funding for. The assessments that people are going to hear about, because we're going to get this question again now that it came up, these assessments are for the public side, correct?
Water service, public side does not get charged. The replacement of public side water services is the responsibility of the utility. It is the utilities' infrastructure from the main to the curb stop. Or it's, the way the rate tariff is actually written, it's the first shut-off valve after the main. For houses, that's the curb stop. So that is the responsibility of the utility. From that curb stop into the house then is the responsibility of the property owner. Sewer and storm laterals, it's from the connection to the main all the way to the property is the responsibility of the property owner. So, so that's where, you know, as you see some of the, the new and relay information for those sewer and storm laterals in particular is where those numbers come from.
Great. Thank you.
If there's nothing else on 25-252, if you'll take the roll.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Mookawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Two more. We have Resolution 25-253, a public hearing to approve the final resolution for special, special assessments for contract 25-09. Sidewalk new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer mains and laterals new and relay. This is for work being performed on Michigan Street, West 8th Avenue, West 9th Avenue, West 10th Avenue, and Ohio Street. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on this, that would be a good time. Second reading, Resolution 25-253, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 25-09. Sidewalk new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer mains and laterals new and relay. Third and final reading, Resolution 25-253, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 25-09. Sidewalk new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer mains and laterals new and relay. No one coming forward, so we'll consider the public hearing closed, and I'll take a motion in a second for 25-253.
So move to second.
Discussion. I see none. Take the roll on 25-253.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Mookawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Final public hearing this evening, Resolution 25-254, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 25-12. Sanitary sewer laterals and relay, and water main and laterals new and relay. This is for work being performed on National Avenue, Lark Street, and Faust Avenue. Second reading, Resolution 25-254, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 25-12. Sanitary sewer laterals new and relay, and water main and laterals new and relay. Third and final reading, Resolution 25-254, approved final resolution for special assessments for contract 25-12. Sanitary sewer laterals new and relay, and water main and laterals new and relay. I have no one coming forward. We'll consider the public hearing closed, and we'll take a motion in a second on 25-254.
So move to second.
Any discussion? If you'll take the roll, please.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Mookawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Next up, we have public statements to counsel. I do know, are you gentlemen here to speak on anything? Just wanted to make sure you had a chance if you wanted it. Sounds good. Well, seeing nobody's registered, we'll move right on to consent agenda. I'll take a motion in a second for consent.
So move to second.
Any discussion on anything consent? I see none. If you'll take the roll on consent agenda.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Mookawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Pending ordinance. We have two pending ordinances. Ordinance 25-273, amend section 27A, section 10.2 of the Municipal Code pertaining to pedestrian malls within the city of Oshkosh. Plan Commission recommends approval. Take a motion in a second, please.
So moved to second.
Discussion. Councilmember Larson?
I have one on this, and I've had a little conversation about it. I don't know, so I sort of get what the point of this is. We're designating pedestrian malls for usage going forward. That'll happen a lot more, we hope. It's a very positive thing. Algo Ma Alley is one that I was involved with deeply, and I'm hopeful to make an amendment if council will hear me on this, to include on item C that Algo Ma Alley is also in possession of overhead lights. I think that's a defining characteristic of that. I think it's a valid thing to call out with regards to what makes it different and why it's a pedestrian mall. It affects what goes on underneath it, and so on and so forth, so there's some right-of-way provisions there. I am not intending to add that to show that, that was able to be done, or to in any way show that there's a process to get lights hung in the alley. Just think it's worth noting in this case that that is a distinguishing part of that thing, because that's kind of what this is for. So I don't want to, I don't interrupt the discussion if there's more, but if there's none, I will move to amend C to include that Algo Ma is in possession of overhead lights. Is that a lot, Mayor? Too many words?
I just want to clarify, are you making that motion, or are you saying you will make that motion if we?
I'm, I'm making that motion. I don't want to interrupt discussion if there's more. So I will, I'll hold off if you want me to.
I don't care the way, I just need to know whether I-
Then yes, I'm making that motion. We'll go, we'll go back to it the other way.
Okay, I'm going to second that so that we can have the discussion on that.
Perfect.
Don't everybody press your buttons at once. Councilmember Buellow?
So my question is, having that verbiage in there, does that wreck anything if, or for some reason those lights need to come down for maintenance or whatever, and does that change its status as a pedestrian walkway and?
City manager, or excuse me, city attorney.
I'll defer if you want to take a shot at it. The question, the, the answer is, I'm not sure. The designation of a pedestrian mall, it's in our traffic section, it's under a statute that's really geared toward, you know, what happens with vehicles and, and pedestrians, and how that, those are used. The, the concerns I have with adding the lights in, in this, for this particular one, we have agreements with the property owners, so the lights are attached to private buildings, and those agreements can be canceled by the property owners, they can be canceled by us if the use of the alley changes, or if they just don't want the lights attached to their building anymore. Adding it in, I guess, would make me question, is that then something that's required? The ordinance is really directed at what, you know, what are you going to allow in terms of like traffic and, and vehicle use for it? And that's why it's in, in the traffic code portion of our, our ordinances. The other thing is that if, if the owners would change, and if we wouldn't have permission anymore, and we want to take the lights down, and we have to change the code, putting it into this section would probably be, and I'm going to just take a shot, maybe a two-month process to change, because pedestrian mall ordinances have to go through Plan Commission and then councils. So it's, it's just something that's a process.
That's what was my concern. So I think it was a valid motion, Larson, but I think I'm going to be against it.
No, Mike, I agree with, I don't need to agree with him, but I agree with everything the city attorney said. What we're doing here is related to traffic, and in this case, this is created, I'm just reading straight from it, to allow primarily, primarily, for the movement, safety, convenience, and enjoyment of pedestrians, and to limit vehicular traffic. That's the reason for, for 10.2, the pedestrian mall. I don't think there's anything in, that should be in here regarding anything else, other than the non-allowing of vehicular traffic. My question is, the, the alley, is it a public right-of-way? Is it our property, or is it private property?
It is public right-of-way.
The alley itself?
It's, it's public property, and it is designated as a right-of-way.
Thank you. The second part is that the wording of the, the attachment of these lights to private property creates some, some interesting complications potentially, either now or in the future, whether it's perceived or real. I just, I don't think it belongs in this space. I don't want to assume the intention, but I think I have maybe a decent idea of the intention. It may just not belong here, and I don't know where it belongs, but that would be why I would be against it at this time, too.
And I could add, I could add to that a little bit. I'll press my button anyway.
Yeah, Councilmember Larson, go ahead.
I read the, the resolution slightly differently. This is about designated pedestrian malls and what goes in them. It says word for word, every pedestrian mall has unique characteristics. That's not just traffic, that is everything that goes with it. And I understand the point of the city attorney very well, and everybody else's. I'm not going to rally for votes here, but two months prog, process to change this if by chance something theoretical happens where something, I, I don't like managing things by exemption anyway, but it took us 18 months to get the lights hung in this alley alone, and four months over the cross, the course of a long process to hang lights anywhere. So yes, to your point, I'm not looking to say, let's include these words here to make this replicable elsewhere, but I'm also saying it would be really good, because it took so long for the folks involved in this project to get this portion of that done. And here's the thing that's calling out the unique characteristics of a pedestrian mall. If the next time somebody wants to do something like this, they can say, hey, did you do that there, and how did you do it there? That would be helpful. So I don't view this as traffic only. I view this as unique characteristics of pedestrian mall, and this is very unique in that we made it extraordinarily difficult to do, and it did get done after all.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I know that we don't want to manage by hypotheticals, and so I'm going to ask you one, because that's, if the city canceled its contract hypothetically for related to the lighting here, would we be in violation of our own ordinance?
With how that's worded, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I just, my question really is, if, if we're allowed to cancel our contract allowing the lighting, by designating it as they have lights, it feels-
Then are we have, do we have to find some other way to put lights in? Are we willing to condemn for that? Is, I don't know.
What's our liability?
That would be the question, is, you know, does the, is the ordinance intended to require us to have lights?
Maybe phrase it a different way. Is, does it open us up to a lawsuit by having this, that written into the ordinance if we cancel our contract?
I could come up with one.
Yeah.
I don't know that I necessarily want to telegraph that on publicly.
Right, right.
And I don't know how good an argument it is, but yes, I, in my head, I, I have an idea of how I could come at us with it.
I think my concern is that the contract that exists today providing the lights gives us flexibility, gives the property owners flexibility.
It's an easement, yeah.
And putting, and putting it in the ordinance, I think, might complicate the contractual arrangement. Now, I'm all for, how do we define processes for allowing lights in this way? All for that. I think that this complicates a contractual relationship, and that's the appropriate means to do this. So I'll be a no.
Councilmember Buellow?
I, I think that's the better question right there, is can the fact that there's lights there be used in upcoming or ongoing potential malls like this to be like, hey, we did it there, can we make this easier to do next time? Without having to put it in the ordinance.
Without getting into specifics or talking about the, the issues with, there were a lot of complications and, and starts and stops with, with the process. Having the agreements we now have in place would absolutely make it easier in a future situation to do that. But you, you potentially, you know, every pedestrian mall is its own unique butterfly. It could have, you know, public property on both sides, it could have private property on both sides. It would be something that we, you know, if you have private property, we now have an agreement. We have a base to say, this is what we've done in the past, and how we could go forward. If it's public, there's different, you know, ways to do things. We have probably more flexibility if it's our own property. So it would make it, I would think, easier with the future.
Because I think that's what we're after, is to make great ideas happen easier and quicker.
Yeah, and, and to the point that every pedestrian mall is a unique butterfly, as you put. All I'm saying is, this alley has lights. That is part of what makes it unique. So I'm not asking for any more nor less than that. Either way is great, though. I mean, you know I'm going to try and get this in regardless, and there are other reasons for it to a degree. DJ, to your point, yes, having a, a process to do this would be great. I asked that question 100 times over the course of this process to do that, and we never got there. So yes, I am absolutely looking for one extra head start the next time we try and do this, but if it's not this, that's fine. I'll keep trying to do it the other, the way you're suggesting also.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion in a second to amend on the floor. If we could take the roll on the motion to amend. That would be quote-unquote "to include" in letter C "in possession of overhead lights."
No.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
No.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buellow?
No.
Mookawar?
No.
We have four noes.
Lost two.
Yep, and two yes. Lost, four noes.
So we're back to the original motion as stated. Any other questions or comments? If you'll take the roll on ordinance 25-273 as originally written.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Mookawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Ordinance 25-274, this is to amend section 4-6 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to alcohol beverages required use of license. I have no one registered, so I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved to second.
Discussion. I see none. If you'll take the roll on 25-274.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Mookawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
New ordinances, we have five of them. We don't anticipate any action on any of these this evening. They'll be coming back for action at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Ordinance 25-275, amend section 27A-11 of the Municipal Code pertaining to parking regulations on 15th Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 25-276, amend section 27A-11 of the Municipal Code pertaining to parking and loading zone regulations on New York Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 25-277, amend section 27A-11 of the Municipal Code pertaining to parking regulations on 6th Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 25-278, amend parking lot maps and associated regulations within Appendix 27B of the Municipal Code for the 200 East Lot. Transportation Committee recommends approval. And final new ordinance, 25-279, amend section 8-1.2 subsection L1 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to room tax penalties. Again, all five of those will come back at the next meeting for action and, and comments. Moving on to new resolutions, we have just a few. We have Resolution 25-280, approved conditional surrender of combination Class B beer liquor license and issuance of combination Class B beer liquor license. This is from Retro's Pub to Retro Vibes LLC. I have no one registered on this one. I'll take a motion in a second.
So move to second.
Discussion. Councilmember Larson?
There will come a day where I will not have questions on every single liquor resolution, I promise you, but we're, and we're almost there. We are making good progress, but that's part of why I'm asking, because we're making progress every time. So Diana, I know you heard some of these questions via email, and I appreciate your getting back to me. We all got some of the questions I was asking answers to in front of us, but they're not online, so the public watching doesn't know that. We have now received confirmation. You can tell it.
Correct. And I, the, the reason that I didn't want to put that online, because that police background information, a lot of it would have had to be rejected, so I didn't.
I understand that. And what I'm getting at here is, we've- And what I'm getting at here is we've, we've put a lot of work into making sure these resolutions and this process is the same. We've refined it a little bit. We've made it better. This one came and is different than the one last time. So going forward, are we going to see that little chart? And we had a discussion the last meeting about the chart, about what was in the chart. Then we got some new information from the city attorney, which is great, about how the chart will look going forward. And then we got a resolution tonight that doesn't have the chart in it at all.
Correct. Only because of the statement, it says that all reviews were done and there were no issues.
Yep. And that's great. I just want, and I don't care what it looks like, I just want to be, same thing I said last time, I don't want to vote yes on a resolution where I don't know what the results are and what I'm voting for. Will we see the chart going forward? Will we see the statement going forward? How will this look? What's the process?
If council prefers it with the chart, I can go ahead and do it that way and mark in there if there's any required actions that need to be done, or if it's complete, I could just put that paragraph in there that everything has been, you know, approved and complete. I could do it either way.
And I'm good either way. I'll defer to the city attorney or the city manager, because we just had that same conversation. And I thought the answer was, there will be a chart, but the chart will look different than the one we saw just two weeks ago. And I'm good either way. I just want to be, I want the process to be consistent because it gets confusing for folks otherwise, myself included.
The wording included in the resolution seems clear. If it's, if that's the case going forward, that would be clear to anybody reading it. And in resolutions, we typically wouldn't probably have a, like, as a matter of form, we probably wouldn't have a checkbox as part of the resolution. So the resolution's at least clear for me.
The form we had, you either checked, checked everything was good, or you checked everything wasn't good and then checked the parts. Because she didn't have anything in the everything isn't good part, she just removed that section just so everybody's on the same page what happened here. She used the form, she just took out the part that didn't apply in this case.
I mean, going forward, I could be specific if there is something that's required, I'll just word it so it's in there.
I don't personally mind either way. I just feel like we've spent a lot of time refining that process. We developed the chart, we put the chart in, we discussed the chart, then we got an email back about changing the chart and then there's not one. And I'm good either way. Mr. Mayor, I prefer what you just said, a statement saying everything is great, I'm fine with. But we did that work because we can't conditionally approve things without knowing what had happened in advance, because there was a legal concern here. So I want to make sure that we are getting the information in the right way, to vote on it in the right manner, so that we're not violating any legal things. We had a workshop about this, we went through a lot of work to get to that point.
I think the other thing is that Diane provided a memo tonight and I think you can expect for these, these kind of one-off of, you know, conditional surrender and use or a brand-new license to have a memo or the information in some type of memo format for you, so it's just easier to see right off.
And that's fine by me. And I don't want to belabor the point, like I said, we've put a ton of effort into making this better, we've made it better and I think that's fantastic. The last question I have on this, I understand the difference between this one being retros to retros. At the last meeting, we approved one that was mile high to 1890 in the same location and there were different provisions there because they renovated, we knew they were renovating, so we have different, we asked them harder questions than we did in this case.
Correct.
During the workshop, we had a discussion about a surrender and a transfer that was from, from an existing building to a different building. And I thought we had said we don't do that anymore, we can't do that anymore, we can't conditionally do that anymore, but I don't know how that's different than what this is.
It's the same building, it's the same--
I know what this one is.
You can conditionally surrender to another building. We actually just did one of those. It was one of the, was it the old Lars?
Yes.
Yeah.
I know, that's why I'm asking, but I thought we had said we can't do that.
City manager did press her button and I missed it, by the way. That's on me.
So you can conditionally accept the surrender? You can't conditionally grant any longer? So--
Right.
And that's why we were going to be utilizing that chart, because then you would know that, you know, the police have completed their review as of a certain date, the health department and all, and then we wouldn't forget any of those things and it would be, you know, because if Diane's not writing the memo or the resolution and this license doesn't need a health department review, how is, you know, then that's going to be missing, then you're going to ask us, well, what about the health department? So that, you know, my preference, if we have a memo, that's fine, but the reason that we went to the chart was so that we would know exactly where everything was and wouldn't, we wouldn't be missing anything. So that's, I haven't talked since we've, you've had those emails back and forth, but that's my preference because it's a lot easier for anyone to find the information going forward, you know, it's just easier that way. But did I answer your question about the conditional?
Yes.
Okay.
And you rephrased it the way I was trying to state it in the first place, so I appreciate that. And again, I'm on board with whatever the answer is. I just want to, I want to be able to be up here and get the same information every time and make sure that we are doing the right thing as, as a group to make it easier for you guys. So I just don't want it to change anymore.
Just one kind of clarification. You can put conditions on a license, you just cannot grant the license and then say, Diane, hold that license until these conditions are met. That was, that condition, that's what we cannot do. You can still put reasonable conditions on a license such as--
Requirements. By a certain date.
Yeah.
I think unless I'm not hearing the councilmembers who've spoken on this clearly. We want consistency in how it's presented. City manager Grill has a good point that the, the chart, however it looks, is a useful tool, that it's consistent and can easily be marked and it's a visual check on, on the thing, on the, within the paperwork, the process. I'm completely fine deferring to staff, but it's just, it needs to be consistent. To Councilmember Larson's point, this one isn't. And so make it consistent.
Okay.
Pick a, pick a path and go, please.
Well, go forward, moving forward, we'll keep the chart. If it's complete, we'll mark complete. It's probably my misunderstanding because we removed it last time, so.
And I'm completely fine if it's a chart or seven words either way, but my understanding is, we wouldn't see one to approve if the chart's not complete. Correct? Because--
Or I would have that, right. Exactly.
Yeah, because we wouldn't approve it.
Well, you would.
We might still approve it.
With a specific date that they have to have their requirements done by, the things that whoever is telling them. So moving forward, I will go ahead and keep that chart and if there's any other text, I'll add it. And if there's any requirements that they need to do, I'll go ahead and put it in there.
Great.
I'll call for the roll on 25-280. I'm not asking if there's more comments on that. Take a roll on 25-280.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Mookawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
25-281, this is a resolution, approve special event downtown Oshkosh Business Improvement District to utilize Opera House Square and Market Street for the Music on Main Event Series. This is June 4th through September 24th, 2025, on Wednesdays, as well as July 3rd and August 14th of 2025. I have no one registered to speak, so I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved, second.
Discussion. I see none. She'll take the roll on 25-281.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Mookawar?
Aye.
Carried six?
Resolution 25-282, approve temporary alcohol license extension. This is for the Grand Oshkosh for Music on Main Event Series, June 4th through September 24th, 2025. This is on Wednesdays. I have no one registered to speak, but I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved, second.
Discussion. Councilmember Beal.
Standing, that's my employer.
City manager Grill.
Sorry to interrupt, but I believe that items 40 and 41 are related, so I would think that 41 would also need to have July 3rd and August 14th added, which are not Wednesdays.
Are those the dates that they might be earlier? I think they're planning an earlier event and they're not selling alcohol at those dates, I'm not sure. I think Kami had called me on it.
It was not on the license. There were specific dates called out on the license and those were not called out on the license.
And I believe those specific dates were, their events are going to be happening earlier and they're not selling alcohol.
Okay.
I could verify it.
Well, we can, since they're always away, we can just leave them off and if we need to come back, we can do that.
We can add.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on 25-282? See Kirk, please take the roll.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Beal?
Present.
Mookawar?
Aye.
That carried 5, one present.
That wraps up the action items for this evening. We're going to move into council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. First up, discussion and direction to city manager A regarding direction to city staff on a recommendation from the final report from Ramble Americas Engineering Solutions, Inc. And I see Public Works Director Robbie coming to the microphone.
Yes, the, a copy of the report from Ramble was included with the agenda at the last council meeting and as we advised in the memo, we would be coming to this meeting to get a little more direction from council to see if there was a way you wanted us to proceed on this matter.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thanks. I guess I just, I read the report and I guess I wasn't surprised that the stormwater was not leaking into the ground. I guess I was under the impression that because the new sewer is so tight, the groundwater wasn't able to get into the storm sewer, which I think was our goal, one of them, when we redid the storm sewers. Do I have that much correct?
Certainly, we don't want groundwater and the storm sewer systems to be flowing independently back and forth. In a case like this, it is primarily to keep the river level that is backing up the storm sewer from exfiltrating out and inundating the ground. So that is our primary reason in that case.
Go ahead, Justin.
And one thing I just want to add to that as well is, one of the four methods of inspection that was done was the electro-magnetic connectivity. So while there were minor defects found, nothing was discernible in the connection between outside and inside, that wouldn't matter if groundwater's flowing into the box culvert or out of the box culvert. That connection would be there regardless and that's what that determined wasn't there.
And that, but that was only done on the, the replaced storm sewer, right? So we don't know what the status was in the old storm sewer.
Correct. And that old storm sewer is no longer--
It's gone. And I understand that. And, but I guess I was, I've always been under the impression that because the old storm sewer is what it was, needed to be replaced, that that groundwater was actually flowing out through that and that's why it wasn't backing up into basements. Is that a possible reality? That now that the storm sewer is so watertight, that that groundwater is going somewhere?
I would say probably not, given the, the level of the water in the storm sewer from the river level and the lake level. As you may recall, when some of the residents came, you know, the, they reported, you know, the water standing in the inlets, you know, to inches below the pavement. That is the river level backed up into that system.
Yeah.
So I would, I would think that there would not be groundwater getting into the system, there would have been more likely of river level leaving the system.
Got it. So I guess the conclusion is that we just still don't know.
Correct.
Okay. And I have a question. For future projects, is there anything that we could have done differently to identify if this were, this, if there's a likelihood of this happening? Have we learned anything through the report process or through this that we could do the next project differently so we can at least give people notice that, hey, you might end up with water in your basement, you need to prepare for that?
One of the things that we've done, so our next phase of the construction project is continuing the box culvert down Michigan towards 11th to make the connection closer to South Park. One of the things we did on that project is a crack and damage survey of the properties adjacent to it, to try to get a baseline of what's out there, to see if the sump pumps are running more frequently now versus after the fact. So I would say the one thing that we're, and not that it's an every project example, I think this is a very unique situation with the size of the infrastructure, storm infrastructure specifically we're working with, to try to get somewhat of a baseline of upfront information of what are we dealing with outside the right-of-way.
That, that's incredibly helpful. And last question, I promise. Without talking about 7th Ave specifically, because I don't, I don't want to concede that we did or did not do anything right or wrong there. Would you change the design? Let me ask it a different way. If we were to spend the extra $100,000, I think is what it said, to do additional analysis, I think that's, that's what the, the quote was, would we learn anything differently that would stop the water from going into the basements? For just that $100,000, is it going to give us information or is it going to fix it? And if it's only information, will that even allow us to fix it?
I can say that the $100,000, again, estimated on the next steps, would just give us information. What the, the next steps that is recommended to do is really take a deeper dive into the possible connection of the storm sewer and the groundwater. So at this time, we're still trying to determine if there is a connection between the two. It certainly would not be any resolution to how to fix the problem. We're still trying to find out what the problem is.
Got it. Thanks.
Councilmember Beal.
Even more uncomfortable question, that it's not fair. We spent approximately 1:30 to get here and we, we're able to cross off one thing, but we're really not that much closer to finding out what it is. And so if we prove another six-digit check, it, what's the odds that it comes back and we are still not closer to knowing? And I know it's not a fair question, but I have to ask it because we don't have unlimited six-digit, six-digit checks.
Certainly very difficult to say, you know, groundwater is a strange animal, but that is a, a possible outcome that we still don't necessarily know where it's coming from and how it's, how it's moving.
Councilmember Larson.
My question, equally unfair, James, and I'm sorry, but it's the same one I asked the first time and the second time. Is there a point in time where it's cheaper just to choose one of these locations where we know that something bad is happening and dig a hole and just look at it? I know that's, that's different than what you're asking, but for example, we just did that on a property that I'm familiar with because I lived near there and when we dug a hole and looked at what was going on, we found what was wrong and we fixed it. We had endless conversations about my issue leading up to that point and we couldn't solve it until we dug a hole and looked at what was broken and then we fixed it. I'm not saying that's the same, but is there a point in time where the studies that are expensive are expensive and don't get us further down the path than just looking at one example? And you're the expert, I'm not saying there is or isn't.
My, my struggle there would be to try and figure out where to dig a hole and how My struggle there would be to try and figure out where to dig a hole and how big of a hole to dig. You know, it is, I think, quite different from, you know, the situation you're referring to with, on merit, where there was certainly some evidence of, we should look here and try to figure out what is happening. I think one of the, if I'm remembering correctly, was putting in monitoring wells with transducers to record data correctly.
Yeah, so what I was going to add, not that it's going to give us an answer. We're trying to figure out, you know, what's going on here. So, one of the, a part of that $100,000 is to do additional soil borings and add monitoring wells to some of them to help more real-time monitor the elevations in the storm sewer, as well as in the ground outside of the box culvert. The additional soil borings, what that's going to try to do is try to better understand the location of the former creek bed, which from old historic photos, we know runs through the area, but exactly where, we don't know. So, we're trying to help isolate that. I think that's a better solution than trying to dig a hole because of the size we need to try to dig. So, we're kind of doing that as a next step with the soil borings and adding monitoring wells. It's just not digging a hole.
It's just we're digging small holes.
Right.
That bigger.
Yes.
Councilmember Flum, you're next.
Just to kind of follow on with this, what level of confidence do you have that doing these soil borings is going to get us any closer?
From my perspective, at this time, more data is good data. Whether it's going to get us something, I can't tell you. I mean, we, as this progressed, time flies, late last fall, you know, we did, as an engineering division, did a fair amount of monitoring of the groundwater in some of the valve boxes that is, that are on the project limits, as well as outside the project limits, as well as taking the elevations in the storm sewer system, whether that be in the storm laterals that are directly connected to it, or the storm sewer itself, the box culvert. All that is great information to help us try to figure out what's going on. So, I can't say that what we would do next would get us to a solution, but I can't say that the more data we have and the more information we have would be anything that's bad.
Sure. Where I'm caught with is between, you know, the residents who are having water in their basement versus us getting more information, at what point do we come to an actionable solution, and we're not there yet, and we can't get to, can't get to point B without stopping by point A? And so, while I do agree that an extra $100,000 sets a lot of money, it's not cheap. But also, these people didn't sign up to have their basement flooded. So, and I'm, you know, that's kind of a tough piece, and I really commend all the work that you guys have done here, but it's, it's like a really expensive game of whack-a-mole.
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah.
If you want to go first, you can go.
The monitoring wells and the transducers that'll record the data, will they have any value beyond the scope of this? If we do solve it, are they going to stay there and still give you data back? Or are they going to come out? Like, is there a long-term investment that we're getting out of it at all?
If we find a solution, I would imagine removing the monitoring wells and the transducers, because in theory, we found a solution, and they're not necessary anymore.
I'm trying to remember if I read it in here or not, so if it's in here, I apologize. Would these be in the public right-of-way, or would these be on private property that we would do this and be asking for access?
A little of both.
That's okay. I just want to know, for anybody listening.
I would say generally, we're looking at the right-of-way. We may have some. We look to try to target on private property with some sort of agreement to be able to do so. But I think generally, we're trying to target the right-of-way in and around the box culvert to really see what the water is doing inside it, as I said, inside the storm sewer system, as well as directly adjacent to it in kind of the trench areas just outside of it.
And I know the residents of this space, this area are not, they're not happy, and they shouldn't be. Something has changed, you know, to them. They believe, and they're unhappy with, they're unhappy with us, and that's okay. That they are, and that's, I'm thankful that they're directing it at us. The downfall is, this is a scientific investigation, and it has to be scientifically done, because otherwise, we're just potentially throwing money around at random things. This is the next logical step in that progression. That's what I'm taking, that this is. I think it's, it's expensive, but it's worth it to see what, what scientific evidence we can gain from this area, see what information you guys can gather. And this is a reasonable next step for us, but to just, and especially for six or seven of us sitting up here to start suggesting activities when I have no business doing that. I think it becomes dangerous a little bit. So, I'm in support of that. If council isn't fully there, and we need another two weeks for council to ask more questions of you, and that might be appropriate too, that maybe we don't give direction tonight. Maybe it's in two weeks, if council needs a little bit more time to grasp this or to reach out and have more pointed questions answered. So, Mr. Nichols followed by Mr. Flum.
Thank you. And to Mayor's point, I understand why these residents are annoyed or angry, or whatever word you want to add there. I was annoyed with the city and city council, and I'm sitting here now. So, I understand getting mad and wanting to do something and talking to people. I also agree with the mayor that I'm not a water scientist, or what, an engineer, or anybody that should be speaking on this intelligently. But to me, I'm not, I'm not yet to the point of let's spend the $100,000. I am a lawyer, and I do think that what we're talking about is a risk assessment in a lot of ways. And so, I've never suggested this before, but I don't know if a closed session at this point is the appropriate next step for us, as we're talking about the specific residents, the potential risks, our potential liability, if it exists, and options there. And so, I'm looking to the city attorney and say, is that, is that a reasonable topic for a closed session? Or are we there yet?
If you're talking about the claims that are currently pending, yes, you could do a closed session in regard to those claims.
And as part of that conversation, could it be balancing continued work versus the claims themselves? If that makes sense. If we're talking about writing a check, isn't that a conversation that could be discussed more generally than just this, this $100,000?
Said a different way, are we getting close to even right here, right now, weakening our bargaining position by having the conversation that we're currently having? Is that it?
Absolutely. There are questions I'm not asking, because I'm worried about.
To your, from your perspective, as our, as our legal advice.
I mean, again, if we're talking about the specific claims and the causes, or, you know, you at one point, Councilmember Nichols said, I don't want to talk about the particular claims or admit anything, and that's, that's the issue. I don't know that we have completed the review of those claims. I have not talked to the claims people recently, have you?
I have not heard from them recently, no.
I think they were waiting for some of this to have further discussions with you, and I don't know if that was sent to them.
Though, I do not believe anything has been sent to them as far as this report goes.
I mean, that may be something we should be doing, is following up with the claims adjusters, and if they've assigned, I don't believe they've assigned council to it, but I can also ask that we have council assigned to it.
City Manager Grill, and then we're going to go to Councilmember Flum, if that's okay.
I was just going to suggest that maybe we talk about this a little bit more internally, and then we can let the council know what the next steps likely should be.
Councilmember Flum.
I have my opinions on this, but I think giving it time for us to have staff look it over again, potentially a closed session, would probably be prudent, so.
I saw a nodding head, by the way. No, I know how much Councilmember Larson enjoys nodding heads. I think that'll be the direction at this time, why don't staff do some more discussion internally? I would suggest probably this being brought back at the next council meeting, whether staff has an update for us or not. Deadlines spur action, in my, is my opinion, so.
And certainly, if you have any questions as you're looking at it, please feel free to reach out to either Justin or myself, and we'll work to get you answers.
And thank you for the work you guys have done on this. It's been extensive, and this is not something, I by no means am qualified to talk about any of these specifics of these projects at all, but I do know that you guys have been on this, and you guys have been diligent, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay. Thank you. Future agenda items, meetings and workshops. June 10th, we have a facility assessment study workshop. This is at 5:00 PM ahead of that meeting. Just making sure that City Manager, 45 minutes-ish will be enough, we feel. I don't like suggesting alternate days and doing longer ones, but I'm just making sure that we feel there'll be enough time for back and forth.
Yes, we will try to, we will provide you information in advance.
Sounds good. We also have a TIF request workshop from Tykor. Do I have that right?
Yes.
On June 24th at 5:00 PM as well. Okay. Councilmember announcements and statements. Any announcements or statements from any councilmembers? I have, I just have a quick couple, actually, for the first time in a little bit. Actually, this afternoon, City Manager Grill, myself, and members of Public Works had a chance actually to meet with, Governor Evers was in town for, he calls it his pothole patrol, traveling all over the state, and today, he happened to visit north side of Oshkosh. We had the honor of greeting him here in town, and what it really is about is just his opportunity to talk about the importance of the state supporting municipalities such as Oshkosh through state aids. Generally, we have, you know, transportation aids that we receive, and hopefully, the state legislature and the governor find a good compromise that helps support municipalities such as Oshkosh, and see a decent increase maybe on those aids for transportation. That's, it's one of the top things that everybody cares about, is good roads. And hopefully, the state can, can help us on that. But you'll see some media coverage, I assume, floating around, and it was a good afternoon for that. Additionally, we have the first of a few Food Truck Fridays coming up in South Park. This is for Friends of the Oshkosh Senior Center, June 6th. The reason I bring it up now is because it'll be before our next council meeting, but Friday, June 6th at South Park, Friends of the Senior Center are putting on Food Truck Friday for music, food, and some fun there. And then, one last thing. Yesterday, I had the honor of participating in the Memorial Day procession down Algoa Boulevard here. Thank you to Oshkosh Media for throwing some footage up here now. If you didn't get a chance to come out, it's a beautiful morning, and a great, a great morning for remembrance. And if you didn't get a chance, Oshkosh Media will have it playing, as well as you can access the recording on YouTube on the city's channel. So, thank you to Oshkosh Media. Got to use the drone. I know staff enjoys that, but they had some, we obviously had the bands from all the local schools, and lots of military establishments from the VFW and others. So, and then there was a activity at the Riverside Cemetery that included several notables, and some high school students came out to make a few readings as well, so. But that was yesterday morning on the Memorial Day procession. That's all I have. If there's no other announcements or statements, City Manager, the rest of the agenda is yours.
Unless there's any questions on the items that are listed, that are professional service agreement or purchase, or any of the outstanding issues, I don't really have anything.
I see nothing from any of us. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.